My light, is there a light on these? You can? All right. I think the double push sort of mutes it. All right, we are here for a special committee on redistricting work session. Today is October 20th. We are here on official state business. So I would like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And if you would rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, committee members. You have an agenda in front of you. I do not anticipate any votes on things of substance. One of the main goals is to reach some sort of a consensus on moving forward. As you are aware, as of today, we have completed a public input session in each county. I want to thank Representative Smith for chairing a few of those meetings that I did not attend. And I want to thank committee members for attending those meetings. I think everybody attended at least one. And there are some members here who attended everyone, and they are to be commended. In light of that, if anybody needs a mileage sheet, because there were some long drives there. I have a few extras here. They were passed out originally. But I understand people may not have them. They are to be submitted to the speaker's office for reimbursement. Representative Weber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was the first thing that you had asked me to remind you of, but you got to it before I did. I also wanted to ask that our records include the letter that I submitted. There's a copy to each of you on your desks. It is from, and I'm submitting it as a member of the committee and as ranking member of Health Human Services and Elderly Affairs. It's a letter to the speaker from 25 healthcare organizations.
I am aware of the, thank you, Representative Weber.
And I would just like it to be part of our records as well as in the speaker's office.
I don't know why it would be part of our records. I think that opens up every committee member to submit anything that is submitted to the Speaker of the House. I appreciate your concern with the issues raised, but it is not addressed to the committee. It does not reference the committee. It is a letter to the speaker, and it is signed by a number of individuals. I suspect many of whom are not even from New, from, they look like most of them are from New Hampshire. And I have no personal knowledge as to why this would be part of the record. So I am going to decline the request to make it part of the public record of this committee. You have referenced it, and it will, of course, be, has been submitted to the speaker. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I would then just ask that we all think very clearly about the requests made therein
Thank you, Representative Weber. In regards to public requests, I just wanted to see if any members had anything specific in regards to the public input sessions other than the issues of access, quite frankly, because those have been raised repeatedly, and I don't think they need to be raised again. But as to the issues before us on redistricting, did any members have anything in particular they wanted to raise for the committee this morning? I'm sure some, a lot of it will come up as we discuss specific maps. Representative Lane.
Thank you. For those sessions, I was not able to attend personally. I watched them on streaming, and I can tell you, I don't know if anybody else has watched them, it's really hard to hear some of the speakers and what they're saying. So as we have additional hearings, we need to really remind them to speak up, because if people are watching, it's really hard to hear, and it's hard to hear the members, too.
Yeah, and we were dealing with different microphones in every setting, so hopefully going forward, we're going to have microphones we're all more familiar with, so we'll be able to deal with that better. One of the things I did want to talk about, because I think it was mentioned at every public setting, was the website. I want to make sure committee members are going on the website to check input. I've gone through it to just review it. I did not make copies of the website submissions for everybody, but I just wanted to go through it so committee members remain aware of what's going on, and the public does also. In regards to submission of testimony to the committee, that can be written or files, map files. It does say very clearly on the website that the files need to be in a PDF format. There have been some problems uploading. Hopefully, any problems have been resolved, and clarification that it needs to be PDF has resolved them. There is a location for general testimony. As of yesterday at 4:30, and that's when I have the data from, there had been 40 submissions to the general testimony link. Of course, people have comments that relate to all of the mapping endeavors we're taking on, and you heard that in the sessions. There is also a link for HB 51. This deals with state senate districts. Our public input sessions were joint sessions with the Senate. As of 4:30 yesterday afternoon, there had been a total of three submissions. Now, this is the House website, so I am not particularly surprised by that. I would expect that people that had specific comments might be commenting to the Senate. As we've discussed, I expect those maps to be done in the first instance by the Senate, who in their typical fashion has not yet had their organization meeting. We are way ahead. The next bill we have is HB 52 with congressional districts. As of 4:30 yesterday afternoon, there had been a total of eight comments. Sometimes it's hard for me to read and count at the same time. On this particular website, you would have the opportunity website link. You will have the opportunity to see submitted maps. There is one submitted map on the Senate site. There are four submitted maps on the HB 52 link. Those do include the Map-a-thon, a handout that members received at an earlier meeting. HB 53 deals with executive council districts. There have been three comments on that site, and again, there is one submission that contains maps, and that would be the Map-a-thon submission that this committee has seen. And then HB 54 for county commissioners had two comments as of yesterday, and actually did have a map submission for one of our counties. And as I'm doing this, it looks like I didn't print out the House comments. There are House comments online. I don't have the exact number, and I think there might be one or two maps on that link. So I just raised that to remind members of the public that you could submit testimony in PDF format at that link, and to request committee members to stay updated on what we're receiving on those submissions. We are, of course, getting direct emails from constituents also. Does anybody have any questions about the website and access? Representative Weber.
I beg your pardon. I guess I just wanted to make sure that I had it clear. What happens with the emails that we get? Because in the normal time, our emails don't become part of the committee's records unless they're submitted as a paper copy, or in this case, uploaded onto the website. So I'm just, I'm just wondering what's happening with all the emails that we're getting.
I suspect what happens with every other House committee at this time. Hopefully, members are reading them and filing them as they deem appropriate. We are getting emails on a fairly consistent basis to the committee. I will say that in my review of the emails as compared to the submitted testimony, the submitted testimony on the website appears to be more on point to actual mapping as compared to the emails we've been receiving. Anybody else on this issue? Representative Pedora.
It's Pedra, Madam Chair.
Pedra, I apologize. I'll write it out phonetically.
No problem. I just wanted to clarify on the website. I was not, I don't see a specific section for comments on House maps, just general testimony, Senate, county, congressional. Is that how it should be, or should there be a separate section?
No, I think there's, there should be one for House. If there, are you looking at it right now?
Yeah, it's not there.
Okay, email to IT. Maybe that's why I didn't print it out yesterday. Yesterday seems a long time ago to me right now, just so you know. Thank you for clarifying that. Christina, if you can send an email to IT, that would be terrific. And if you get a response while we're still in session, can you let me know what it is? Because it has been there in the past. An issue was raised yesterday morning and communicated with IT that there were problems uploading to the site, and maybe they've had to take it down for maintenance, but hopefully we'll get an answer to that, and thank you for raising that. You have in front of you a copy of the letters, of a sample letter that was sent to the cities. This was sent to Berlin. I asked Lindsay to just print out a sample of the letter that was sent to every city. This is actually sort of perfect, because Berlin does not actually have wards, and I have already received a call from them saying, "We don't have wards, don't give us wards." So I have assured them we will not be doing that. And Representative Bergeron and Representative Lane, if we want copies of the letters to each city, we'll get them after the meeting. Has anybody heard from any cities in regards to this, other than my call from Berlin? Representative Bergeron.
No, I haven't heard anything yet from any of the cities.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that leads to the, you should have all now, everybody in this room, oh, excuse me, Representative O'Hara.
I did talk to the mayor of Laconia, and Laconia has their lines drawn up. They just haven't voted yet.
Oh, they already have them done?
Yeah, so I get them from Scott Myers, the city manager.
All right, if you can get the population numbers for those, that would be terrific. I'm assuming they're pretty close to equal, so it shouldn't affect our mapping at this point, really.
Yeah, that was their goal.
Okay, great. Representative Lane.
I was told informally by the mayor of Concord that we would have them. I think he said by the end of October, so I'm going to follow up with him. But he said he would definitely have them to us in time, by the 18th.
Wow, great. Anybody else? All right. The thumb drives you should have received have this city wards with the population allocation that's closer to what we expect as compared to what it is currently. So hopefully, that will assist you in your map drawing. It also includes a program for the county commissioner districts, which you could do with the other programs, but this will make it easier. So if you don't have a thumb drive, let me know, and I think we need to figure out how to get it to Representative Cody. There should be one more, but everybody in here should have those thumb drives. The next, Representative Weber.
I'd volunteer to deliver that if you'd like me to.
I think you volunteered for the last one, or somebody delivered the last one, I think. All right, the next thing I wanted to talk about with the full committee was scheduling. We are through the public input sessions, so we need to do some scheduling. There have been some tentative discussions about scheduling. Things can change, of course, but I wanted to run through it with the committee with my logic and then move forward from today. We need to report out by November 18th. That means we need to have votes on all of our bills the week of November 15th. I believe we should allocate the possibility of meeting for at least one day, if not two that week, to get through those discussions. So plan on meeting the 16th and the 17th. And if we get done on the 16th, we won't need to meet on the 17th. There has been a request made pretty much at every hearing for public to be able to have input on maps after they're selected. So we will have, as we, in Concord, as we do on all bills, public input sessions on these bills the week of November 8th. Tentatively, that will be two days. It may be a morning and an afternoon. The actual schedule has not been determined. And to be quite honest with you, right now, I can't remember whether I requested Reps Hall for the 8th and the 9th, or the 9th and the 10th. And so I will update you, committee members, by email, but that meeting in Reps Hall for public input on maps will be the week of the 8th. November 11th is Veterans Day. Thursday, the State House is closed. Which means that we need to, as a committee, vote on maps to go in front of the public for comment the following week, the previous week, which is election week. So my preference would be to have a meeting on the 3rd to be able to go into the 4th, but I want some committee feedback on that, because I am more than happy to go the 4th, leaving the 5th open, because we can continue the meeting. I think the clerk would probably like to have something for the calendar. But these are really work session votes, not vote executive session votes. The executive sessions will be the week of the 15th. So really, for the calendar, we're talking notices. So I guess I'm going to look for a committee consensus on whether to start this process of actually going through the maps and voting on Wednesday or Thursday. Representative Weber.
I would just note that I have a conflict on the 3rd, but if that's what's most convenient for the committee, of course, we'll get a substitute.
Okay. All right, I'm going to look to Representative Bergeron, who I have loaded up with two meetings today, with one on election law, so I'm trying to defer to him in regards to his city duties, because November 2nd are city elections. Would you prefer to start on Thursday?
Me personally, it doesn't matter, because I won't be working at the polls, and I won't be assisting the clerk, current clerk anymore with elections.
Okay.
So it really doesn't matter to me, the 3rd or the 4th.
Go ahead. You don't care, do you?
I'll be on 15th.
Yeah, but you don't care what day.
I'm just going to move forward.
Okay, all right. Representative Smith has to leave for a few minutes, so anybody else on a preference for what day to start? That would be on my baggage behind me that he just stripped over. All right, how many want to start on Wednesday? Show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. How many want to start on Thursday? One, two, three, four, five. I think I would prefer to start on Wednesday, just because I want to make sure we get through it. So let's start on Wednesday. Do you have a conflict all day, Representative Weber?
Yes.
Okay.
My meeting's in Berlin, and so the likelihood of my getting back in time for anything without getting arrested is very unlikely. I'd rather not. And I may have a conflict on Thursday morning as well, but that depends on the Berlin court schedule, so.
All right, I just really think, given the schedule and what we're doing, we're stuck with that week for meetings.
It makes entirely good sense, and I just...
Okay. It occurred to the chair that she should probably look at her calendar also. My husband will have to deal with the stove installation by himself. All right, so if we're having committee meetings on the 3rd and the 4th, we are here on the 20th. It becomes an issue at that, at this point, I think, as to how we want to proceed to review maps. And I say this because I haven't seen many maps. Now, I haven't particularly put a call out for maps, but I haven't seen many, and we need to have maps at meetings to vote on. So Representative McGuire has kindly done some work on maps with the programs that we've had now for quite a while, and you have that handout. So I would, I am going to ask Representative McGuire to go through what she did so that as a committee, we can make some decisions on when things have to be submitted and if this format works.
Yes.
We are going to deal with paper, because with the room that's spread like this, to do things on a screen is simply impractical, and I want to have control over what everybody is looking at to be sure it is the same. So...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right. I worked on three counties, Belknap, Grafton, and Merrimack. There are some printing issues due to the fact I had to, so these packages are not quite as complete as I might like, but we'll go through them. The top is a representative's district for Merrimack County, and the towns are on the page three showing the...
That says Belknap.
This is Belknap. Yeah. Belknap, yes, excuse me. They're in alphabetical or, they're not in alphabetical, or they're Belknap.
Okay, Merrimack is two sheets in.
Yeah, there's, so we'll start with Belknap, because it's smaller.
Okay.
The first map, which is on the cover, shows representative districts, and there's a listing of them, so that each ward of Laconia gets its own representative, and then there's a floterial over the entire city. Then there's Barnstead, Belmont, and Gilminton with five reps, which is bigger than I might like, but the size of the town pretty much prevented me from doing anything else. Alton and Guilford for four reps. Meredith, San Parnton, and Tilton for four, and then Center Harbor and New Hampton for one. And this, the interesting part about this is that the whole county has very inconvenient sizes for every town, and it was really impossible to give them their own representative. But that happens.
And what is the resulting deviation range when you use?
5.29%.
Okay. So as the committee is aware, we're shooting for plus or minus five, so we're running in...
Well, this is, this is actually skewed lower. It's minus six to minus .78 because of the size of the county. So this could, I'm sure this could be improved, but it's a first pass that seems to meet the requirements.
All right, so what you have is a printout of the map, and then the printout of the towns with reps with deviations.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, and was this all available from the program that we're working from?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
In fact, just a printout from it.
Okay. Now, there were some issues in regards to printing this out. So how did those end up getting resolved?
I managed to... If I were at home, I could have just printed from the program. Because I wasn't at home, I had to manipulate it into a PDF and then email that to our staff.
All right. So I'm raising that issue. So committee members, when you're working on maps, you need to be aware of what you're on for purposes of transmission.
And it was, it was a convoluted process to get the map in PDF. And then... Yes, thank you, Representative Turcot disagreeing with me. The, the list of towns with deviations is a cut and paste. That's much easier to get. Okay. And then...
All right. Anybody have any questions on Bellknap? Representative Weber?
Still a little confused about the second map. Is that floterials?
No, ma'am. That, there are no floterials except the one in Laconia. The second one is the county commissioners.
Oh, oh, okay. It's just there aren't any labels.
Yes, well, like I said, there's some output issues.
No, that's fine. I just need to write them down.
Yeah. The county, the second, the back of the first page is the commissioners, yes.
Representative Smith?
Looking at the lists here, the left-hand column says total seats 19, the right 18.
There are 19 seats in Bellknap. For, since I was using the reps map program to generally...
This was before the county program got distributed.
Before the county program. I just made it for six so the numbers would be appropriate. These, this isn't the exact deviation, but the spread should be about right. It will have to be checked before we get accepted.
As I said, you could do the counties, but you ended up doing the deviation spread based on reps. So that's why your number of reps is slightly off.
Yeah.
Using the new program that we have that can get fixed.
Bellknap does not have a, have an even, 19 is not divisible by three evenly, so I had to do it with an approximation. But if you look at the population of the three districts, it's 22068, 2589, and 2148, which should give you an idea of how close they are.
Representative Lane?
Thank you, and thank you for doing this. This is awesome. The bottom of the, the one for the reps, the page?
Yeah.
There's that little triangle there?
That's Barnstead.
Okay.
The rest of Barnstead is falling off, has fallen off the page.
I figured that... Okay. Thank you.
In fact, it fell off on both maps.
Yeah.
But it's still Barnstead.
Okay.
We haven't forgotten Barnstead.
That's right.
Representative Weber?
Thank you. With respect to the commissioners' district and the total seat seat数is 18, I understand the concept of nine not being, 19 not being divisible. Are you assuming that the commissioner districts should track the, should track the other districts or...
No, the commissioner district should be as equal as possible.
It's just that's the way, way you had to do it to get it to print out?
Correct.
Okay. I got it.
Yes. No, the, well, I could calculate the deviations by hand, but it's, it would be, be a pain. So the...
Hold on, Representative McGuire. Representative Berry?
Yes. Thank you, Representative McGuire, for doing all these. So you noted in your initial testimony, or your statement, I should say, that it's, it's sometimes very difficult to give each town its own rep in Bellknap County specifically because of how off they are from the standard deviation. Have you, in, you looked at any other counties? Have you kind of seen that around? Or is that, is that going to be a Bellknap County problem? Or is that going to be a problem statewide?
It's a problem everywhere because if, if nothing else, the easiest way to give every town their rep is to have enormous floterials, which we heard even more, we heard even more testimony against than for every town to get their rep. Even the people that are in small towns that don't, so they weren't demanding their own rep, were complaining about enormous floterials.
Okay.
So, and yes, it is a problem, but...
Representative Turcot?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To answer Rep. Berry's problem, we did hear at almost every one of our public input sessions, individuals saying, "If we have a minimum of the 3444, we deserve our own rep." I think it's very important for people to understand that that's, in some cases, an impossibility, and I've got a great, great example for everybody to look at. If you look down in the southeast corner, we don't have it right here, but...
Well, then you don't have it for us to look at. We are not talking about maps at any point if people are not looking at them because it just gets too confusing.
Oh, wait, turn this.
And they're not, you know, we're not submitting anything for people to consider and vote, but I think that that sort of, hearing that issue. I actually got a big kick out of that issue because we were sitting there with senators and people were complaining about the size of districts and representation, and I'm sort of looking over at the senators going, "How's that working out for you?" Representative Weber?
I'm just wondering, for comparison purposes, and I would do this if I could, if I could actually do the maps, but I can't because I don't have technology that...
Actually, there's technology downstairs in what used to be the smoking room for all representatives to use.
Okay. Well, I will try and do that. My understanding was that they didn't want stuff uploaded on those because of, I could be wrong about that. That's a memory from a long time ago, so I will check it out.
This came from IT. So if there's an issue, we need to talk to IT.
I, I will check those out, and thank you.
Okay.
I just, I'm wondering if it's possible to try and compare because I, as Representative McGuire did, I heard the, the comment about enormous floterials don't make a lot of sense. But what I also heard from people was, if, if we could get the underlying representation as small as possible, then maybe the enormous floterials don't matter. It's easier to actually get the deviations right if you do it the way Representative McGuire did it because you have a little more to play with in each, in each case.
Well, we've got 15 members, so we can have 15 maps.
Yep.
So there we go.
I will try and figure that out. I'm not trying to make work for other people.
Yeah, well...
Well, let's make work for some people. But we've got some people apparently doing all the work and other people maybe not. So part of that discussion is going to be, where are these maps going to come from and when are we going to get them? Continue, Representative McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In Bellknap County, you can't, that doesn't work. I tried, believe me.
Okay.
This don't work exactly, and I've got a few more. All right. So for county commissioners, normally in the case of a county commissioner, you, you try not to split up the cities, but it was impossible to come up with anything close to plus or minus 5% without breaking up Laconia because of the way the towns are arranged. And again, this is a draft, and I would love to have somebody do it better, but...
Representative Hara, I hear your name being called in regards to Bellknap County issue for division of the city for county commissioners.
Yeah, so...
I thought that was, I thought that was a rep map for a second, I was like, what's going on?
Okay.
No, it's, it's, it's the county. It's three districts, exactly. And the Alton, Barnstead, Belmont, Gilminton district is too big, but there's no other way to do it because they aren't adjacent to anything smaller. You know, you've, you've got to cover Alton and Barnstead somehow, and swapping Guilford and Belmont would just make it worse, not better. So there are three districts.
So what you're saying is Bellknap County has issues?
Bellknap County has issues, yes. I wouldn't go so far as say they're insurmountable, but it, it was difficult.
Okay.
The second district is the, is the northeast: Guilford, Center Harbor, Meredith, New Hampton, and one ward of Laconia. And the other one is the rest of Laconia, plus Sanburnton and Tilton. And they're, they're within deviation, but it's not, I'm not proud of it, and I'd love to have somebody come up with something better. Okay. Now we get to Merrimack County, which has conveniently 45 reps, so the county commissioners was easy. All right. This has a couple of small floterials. For, now, let's see. The list of towns is on page five, and I'm afraid that due to, due to printing issues, it doesn't include all of them.
All right. But part of this exercise is to give everybody an idea of what we can do and what we can take a look at, so...
Right. This, this one is, we didn't quite get all of them, but the first one is London, Newbury, Sutton, and Wilmot for three reps. If you could give New London its own rep, but then you would give, the other district would have a deviation of greater than 5%, I think it was 5.2. And so I chose to include New London in with the smaller towns that are adjacent to it. There are a lot of, a lot of small towns in the, in the north and west. The second district is Franklin, all three districts, all three wards. Then Northfield has a rep, and there's a floterial over Franklin and Northfield, which is fairly similar to the current plan. Danbury, Hill, Andover, Salisbury, and Webster with two reps. I would have liked to put Andover and Hill together to make one rep district, but that leaves Danbury floating out, causing trouble for everybody else. So combined them. Bascon gets its own rep. Loudon is with Canterbury as currently. And then there's a fairly large floterial over from Danbury to Loudon. But that's, I'm sure there are, there are other ways to do it, but that, that works Henneker is with Bradford and Warner, which are each too small to have their own rep, and it comes out to be a three-rep district. Hopkinton is with Concord Ward Five as currently for another three-rep district. Dunbar and Hooksett comes out with five representatives very nicely. The other ward, Bow is with, I think it's Ward Seven in Concord. And then they, and in a three-rep district. Then the other wards get, each get their own rep plus a floterial. Pembroke and Trichester together for three reps. Epsom and Pittsfield together because Pittsfield has actually gotten smaller, unfortunately, so we have to, we have to get, give the same base district to the two towns. Allen's Town gets its own, and then there's a floterial over the three towns. Again, this works. The numbers work. I've made the floterials as small as I could, but I'm sure there's room for improvement.
Thank you. Any questions on the rep map as drafted? Representative Lane?
Thank you. I have looked at this. I haven't done a map the way that you've done it. Is there no way to keep Concord together as, or just keep it as it is now and have Ward Five share with Hopkinton?
It, that leaves Bow out in the middle with, with a major deviation.
Okay.
I couldn't find one. If you can, that'd be interesting.
Okay. Yeah. We, no, we've been working on it, so...
Yeah, well, it's...
No, I was just curious because it's, it is a, a problem. Okay. Thank you.
Fortunately, the towns adjacent to Concord are, are well-integrated into it. There's no question that, you know, if you drive on 3A, you can see how Concord goes into Bow with a very straightforward approach.
Okay. Commissioners?
From the commissioner district, that, that one, we did, I did keep Concord together, and Concord plus Bow is a third of the county, almost exactly. You could see the numbers. It's within 1% for 15 reps. So that works. And then you divide the other two, the rest of the county...
To get your 15.
To get the other two, two districts. These, the, at the, on this plan, the two other districts other than Concord are within seven people. So I think that's about as good as we can get. But there are other plans that would work. It keeps Franklin, which is the only other city, in one district. And although it wasn't one of my goals, it also means that the three current commissioners are each in one district. It just happens. But...
Okay.
So that's very nice. All right. And then there's Grafton, which again, has a map issue. But you can, you can look, there's the map of the districts and the map of the commissioners, and then the list, actually, they got the list of towns correct for the house districts. So you can see that they're all within less than 8%. 4.8 to minus 3. So that's a very close deviation for the house districts. They're all as small as I could make them, and no floterials except one in Lebanon. Littleton and Monroe for two, two seats. Bethlehem and Fraconia for one. A stack of small towns: Easton, Landoff, Lisbon, Lyman, and Sugar Hill for one. Bath, Benton, Havrell, and Pyramid for two. Ellsworth, Lincoln, Livermore, Thornton, Warren, Waterville, and Woodstock for two. One for Campton by itself. Two for Plymouth by themselves. And three in Canaan, Dorchester, Enfield, Grafton, Groton, and Orange. They specifically asked to be kept together, but for three reps, which is what they're worth, we can't have a, can't do a floterial. The numbers just don't work. Orford, Rumney, and Wentworth for one. Alexandria, Ashland, Bridgewater, Bristol, Hebron, and Holderness for three. Hanover and Lyme together for four. It can't be fewer because the, the size of Lyme. And then each ward of Lebanon gets a rep and a floterial over the three, over the entire city, adding up to the 26 reps. Which comes out nicely. And...
And again, on the, on the map, it got cut off a little bit at the bottom, but everybody's included.
Yeah. Sorry about that. I couldn't, couldn't get onto the airport Wi-Fi properly, so it took a while.
And then you took a look at the commissioners?
Commissioners, yes. The one, one district: Lebanon, Hanover, and Enfield, which is 30,000 people. Second district, which is, you can see the edge of it on, on the map. It's, it, Canaan is, is the light triangle just next to Hanover, and then it goes up through Dorchester, Wentworth, Warren, Ellsworth, over to Campton, and then down. So it's that section of the county. And then the other district is Lyme, Orford, Pyramid, Havrell, and over to Waterville Valley. And those two districts are, again, very similar in population. Not quite as close as Merrimack, but close. And the deviation on the county is approximately 1.7% overall. So...
Okay. Before I take questions, Representative Piedra, I see you've got your computer opener. You checking the website? Is it there yet?
Well, I'm not there.
Can you take a, can you take a check and let me know? Representative... Representative Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As always, on the awe of Representative McGuire's work ethic and her work product, it's wonderful to see this, and to get a sense of where are they going to be able to move through. But just as a procedural matter, could I suggest that we find a way to make sure that the printing burden doesn't fall on individual members of this committee? We ought to have a very clear way to do this, to do it in color in 2022. We ought to be able to do this in color, because it's easier, I think, to, whatever year it is, 2020, to follow. And to make sure that we have a name of the source, because as we get inundated with these, I was able to write Representative McGuire's name on front of this, but as we get inundated, we really don't need, you know, where these good ideas come from. So that's just a procedural.
Well, and if you note on the agenda, we have an issue in regards to getting maps to staff before meetings, so that they can be copied and labeled.
Yes, I, I sent it to, to the staff, but they, but our assistant didn't have access to the program.
Right.
So we'll, we'll have to make sure that she gets it, because you can print it from the program, and it quite, quite much more easily than you can from, from me trying to manipulate it into something that I can email.
So we may need to deal, I may need to deal with staff in regards to who do we need to get on these when they come in, because I'm not sure that one assistant dealing with printing these is going to be sufficient. Still not there?
It shouldn't be our, it shouldn't be our problem, I mean, that's up to the, oh, it is, oh, it's six years.
Yeah, no, it, yeah, I have to apologize, but this is the best I can do on my vacation.
Representative McGuire, no apologies necessary, and it is the map. So Representative McGuire has gone through using the program that we have, she's provided this information. What is committee member's sense as to, is this the information we're looking for to assess maps? Am I getting a consensus that this is, this is what we need to get as compared to, well, I mean, the option is just a map, the option is no map, just numbers, I mean, people might want to submit other things, but I'm looking for a minimum to staff for us to have at some point before a meeting, so that we have in front of us what we're going to address. Representative Lane.
I guess I, I would like them before the meetings in this form, so we can compare them. My other suggestion, which I'm sure people aren't, it's going to be mixed, but we could do this and have it up and move it on the computer and have somebody show us why it doesn't work. I mean, it is possible to do that, but I don't know, I mean, technology-wise, I don't know if that's too much to set up, or if everybody doesn't have a computer, you know, maybe that's a problem, but I know that you can move them around, and we can do it on Zoom and share the screen and move it around and show how, so she could show us what she did and why having, say, one town as a separate one didn't work. I, I just, anyway.
I think if members, I am not go, going to go down that route, because I'm not sure everybody has the same access to computers. We're going to have substitutes on committees. I know I'm not going to be able to have a computer in front of me and follow it and, and.
Right.
Share the meeting and go through it. And there are issues, just as Representative Smith indicated, it was helpful to label it. I'm, I'm concerned when we're talking about computer screens and being able to follow what goes on. I am going to allow members to have computers in front of them for this, I am not raising issues with that, but I know not everybody has.
Okay.
A computer in front of them, so I, I get that approach, and I understand it, but hopefully by getting it to committee members before the meeting, and we need to talk about when, if there are particular deviation issues that you want to address, you'll have an opportunity to do so. I will also note that going through these, I think took about a half an hour. Does that sound about, I wrote down, I thought about writing down what time we started. Actually, I wrote down 9:30. So it took an hour and a half. I'm looking at, at somebody in the, does anybody have any idea what time we started talking about, Representative McGuire?
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't start the meeting till 10, so it was 10:30.
Madam Chairman, we started this meeting around 20 after, 20, maybe, maybe 30 after.
All right, I'm raising that, so it was at least a half an hour to go through this without any discussion on alternative maps. So I'm raising that, so people have an idea of how much time this is going to take to go through these. It's not going to be quick. So other comments on the, on the presentation? Representative Smith, I'm sorry, you had your hand up and I forgot.
I would ask that the materials be delivered to us 48 hours before scheduled meeting, so that we do have time to intelligently review in advance of the meeting. If the legislature doesn't have a chance to reevaluate them and be much better able to discuss them when we come, to get them when we come into the meeting would not be anywhere near as helpful.
My inclination would be 24 hours, and here's why, we're probably starting our meetings on Tuesday or Wednesday. If this is anything like me, getting a report done for the court, or papers done for school, it will be done the weekend before, which means staff will get it on Monday, and so 48 hours is just not going to make it for, for a Wednesday meeting, so.
Four hours is fine, I just don't want it to be an hour.
No, 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 I, I, I agree that unless we recess, so people can go do something by consensus and come back to look at something in the course of deliberations, I can see that happening, but as far as maps to be presented, I think, I understand wanting to have them, but I'm trying to consider the workflow. And if they're available before 24 hours, there's no reason why they can't be distributed, but I think the cutoff needs to be 24 hours. Representative Willam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we're talking about making maps available in advance of meetings, I'm curious if there is an amount of time that you think is acceptable, or that is a goal for making maps available ahead of the public hearing?
Well, that's not going to be able to occur until we have a consensus on what is going to happen, and that won't occur till the week before the public input sessions in Rep's Hall, so it will be then. We're not, I'm, to put maps, people are free to post what maps they want, as far as testimony, but as far as committee product, that will be the week before the Rep's Hall meeting. That's why we're scheduling probably two days that week to go through maps. Representative Lane.
Sorry, to go back to scheduling, are we meeting next week?
I had originally thought we would meet next week, but as I ran through this schedule again and realized that mapping, a substantial mapping, my suspicion still needs to occur, I am reassessing my thought that a meeting next week would be of value. Given that we seem, we've gone through a sample, and where we want maps to be submitted, I am thinking that it makes more sense to let people spend their time next week working on maps, and make sure that they're all into staff, so that we can get them before our meeting on Wednesday the third.
Okay.
Unless somebody has a specific, I mean, tentatively, I had mentally thought of a, that we would have a meeting next week, but I want to make sure if we're coming in, it's for.
Yeah.
A valid purpose, to drag everybody in.
I just wanted to get it on my schedule as, as soon as possible.
Well, I mean, let me ask, because originally I had thought we were going to need it, but I'm thinking that given the amount of maps and preparation that needs to occur, that we're better off scheduling a couple of days together, as compared to, I'm worried that if we do it next week and we set maps to be done, that then the next week, somebody will have another map.
Right.
Because they didn't get to it, and I'd rather have everybody be able to get to everything they want to, so we can have it all together.
That's fine with me.
The other alternative, because I had thought perhaps to work on it today, is to just come in to do county commissioner maps next week, but I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense to come in to just do a county commissioner map, maps for every county. Representative Smith.
Thank you very much, I think I agree with you that individual time next week makes a, makes a lot of sense. Would it be possible, given what we agreed to earlier today, to make sure that the clerk has the whole schedule today before the meeting has to have all the power of information, because the most significant, that we did, the public, a long time to know when we're meeting and when we're going to hold those public hearings, and we've heard a lot of requests for a lot of notice, and if we could get all of that in the power of the day, I think, you know, that would be a lot of all our lives.
I'll see what I can get done.
Great, thank you.
Representative Lane.
Thank you. So on the third and fourth, is it safe to say we'll probably start 9:30 or 10:00 and basically go the whole day? Should we just block off the whole day, or what?
I would have to say, I think that's probably reasonable.
Okay.
Let's start at 10:00, because we know there's going to be paper shuffling going on.
[laughing]
Before we sit down. So let's plan on 10 o'clock on the third and the fourth. All right. There is a bill, I'm going to move on to the next thing that I had on my agenda, there is a bill, HB 55, in regards to the state party. Representative Berry, do you have any expectation of something that might be happening with HB 55?
Yes, Madam Chairman. So I've been looking into the delegates to the state party convention, so a, a really brief history for those watching at home. We haven't codified in RSA how political parties are supposed to organize their, basically their party structure. Parties have the option to opt out of this process. The Democratic Party has opted out of this process, the Republican Party is still in this process. So for, the way it works is, there are delegates to the state party convention, each town is guaranteed their own delegate. Those state party delegates combine with the party nominees for all the offices, so everyone in this room is a, would be a delegate to a state party convention, coupled with people who are elected purely for delegates. So HB 55 deals with the people that are elected purely for delegates. There are a lot of issues with this process. Political parties are considered basically semi-public organizations, they're, they're half-private, they're half-public, they're, they're privately run, but they have an impact on, obviously, public elections. So there, there are questions raised as to whether or not the current delegates would actually sustain, sustain a legal challenge, because they are not in any which way proportional. In fact, it is a complete violation of one man, one vote. However, it is a private organization. So there's, there's a very, there's a lot of different court cases out that surrounds how parties operate, how they nominate. The one that I cite all the time is actually, it's California versus State Democratic Party, which the State Democratic Party of California sued, I want to say it was a couple, it was a couple decades ago, basically telling the state of California that they are a private organization, that they can control how they nominate their candidates for ballot access. And the Supreme Court actually ruled with the California Democratic Party and says, yes, you are a private organization, you can control your process. So we flash to New Hampshire, and we have this interesting situation, where we have the state dictating to political parties how to organize, giving them the option to opt out, but by having the state control it, it raises, I believe, constitutional questions about one man, one vote, because the state is actually putting forward districts that are not in any which way proportional or representative. A town of 300 gets the same, is guaranteed the same minimum representation as a town of 3,400. So that obviously creates problems. So I went to, I don't, can't speak for my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, they're not involved in this process, but obviously happy to hear their input. I went to the Republican Party, I said, hey, you know, we have this, this problem of, one day, we might be sued, and I don't know if we would survive the challenge. Once again, I don't know, because it's a semi-public organization. I don't know, don't know which way the courts would come down, I could, honest to God, I could see it going either way. You know, we have this, we have this, this issue, what do you want to do in this situation? And it, it appears that the solution is to get rid of the, the delegates altogether, and leave in the clause that says that the nom, the party nominees will remain delegates, but the state will no longer operate the underlying districts. And I said I would take that back to the committee and present that to the committee. There's a variety of reasons why I personally believe it's a, it's a good idea. The, the first of which is, I, I do have a, a philosophical issue with, with asking the New Hampshire taxpayer to fund an election for a private organization. You can make the argument that we do that via primaries, but I think in that situation, the parties are operating more in their public capacity and less in their private capacity. In my opinion, when the state is funding an election to elect delegates who are then electing state committee members, that, that is a largely private function. And you have a philosophical issue with asking taxpayers across the political spectrum to fund an election that is currently being exclusively used by my party, the Republican Party. So that is where, that is where I am at on HB 55. If I was to vote today, I would vote to abolish the district entirely. I would leave the RSA in there, so that particularly the Republican Party, who's still using this process, can still have their process intact of having their delegates, which would be anyone who has won a party nomination contest. And that wouldn't severely compromise the party, but would also, in my opinion, relieve the New Hampshire taxpayer of having to fund an election for what I view as a private organization.
Thank you, Representative comments. This would be House Bill 55, and it deals with RSA 662-6, I believe. Representative Lane.
I appreciate this, because we've had this bill before in election law, but this may be a dumb question, why are we considering it in this committee, and why are we discussing it? I'm sorry, I don't.
Because it's actually a districting bill.
Okay, thank you.
Theoretically, it should be getting based on factors arising out of the census, it just hasn't been. And maybe it will save us time in election law. Representative McGuire.
Yes, thank you. I would have to agree with Representative Berry that this is probably not the best way to do it. And having worked with a large number of people, there is major confusion among the populace on what's a delegate, and why do we bother electing them? And therefore, I tend to think it might be a good idea to let the party figure out what they want to do for delegates other than nominees, and stay out of it, have the legislature stay out of it.
So it, it has been the determination that this can become before this committee from a jurisdictional issue, so unless there's further objection, I'm, Representative Weber.
I just have a comment, and it comes out of Wilderment, because it, what I'm hearing people say, and I know nothing about the process, is that it's very difficult and inconvenient and confusing, and I just wonder if the easiest solution isn't for the other party to opt out as well, and do it at their pleasure, and, as the Democrats do, and then we could simply repeal the statute and have one less statute on the books. I, I just put that forward, I don't want to interfere in a process that I'm not involved in, but listening to this discussion, that's what popped into my head, so I thought I'd let it come out of my mouth. Thank you.
Representative Berry.
Yes, to respond to the representatives' questions. So this process exists for any party, you know, that would, that would opt to use it, so when we make these changes on a, a state level, I, I don't think waiting for a private entity to withdraw is, is wise. We make, you know, in theory, we are making a decision that would impact all political parties in the state, not just the Republican Party. Currently, would, underneath its current structure, it would only affect them, but in, in theory, the Democratic State Committee could meet and say that they want back into the system, and then they would be using these, what I, I believe would be deemed unconstitutional districts. So I, I think it's, I think it's, I, I don't want to wait, but I think from a, you know, when we operate, we operate for everyone, right? I don't just operate as a Republican. I don't just operate as a Republican. I represent all people in my district, and we have to make decisions as a state. And I think it's the best thing to do is to, you know, the horrific situation that I see, the apocalyptic situation, is that someone sues over these districts, and then the Attorney General's office has to then finance a defense because this is state law. And now not only do we have the taxpayer funding an election, but now we have the taxpayers funding a legal defense for a private entity. I think it's best just to take it all off the table.
Most of it off the table.
Most of it off the table.
Okay. Because that's your proposal, as I understood it.
Correct.
Okay. Representative Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I mean, to be clear, the bills before this committee, because we're responsible for redistricting, I can't let these districts stay the way they are because they're clearly skewed, they're clearly unfair, they're clearly not representative of equal levels of population. And I agree with Representative Berry, I don't know why the state would be doing this or we would spend time on it. Waiting for the party to do something, they're organizing their work. I think the best way to convey a sense of urgency is to get rid of this. And then, you know, they have time, they have months to think about it, come up with their process, or when this goes to the Senate, beg for an amendment and then make their case. But either way, it'll force them to do the work. I'm not saying that they're lazy and ignoring it, but if I'm prioritizing my work, and this might not matter if I was in charge, but if you repeal it, well, now it becomes my priority, so I'd like to see it all stricken.
All right, well.
Madam Chairman.
Representative McDonald.
I'm just curious if I could ask my Democratic colleagues how you choose your state convention delegates? Just curious.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Well, we're discussing how to choose state convention delegates. We're just wondering how the Democrats do it where you don't elect them on the ballot.
But that's outside of the purview of this committee.
I'm just curious.
I could look it up and find out, but it's outside of the purview of the committee at this point.
Yeah, if you could let me know, I'd appreciate that. Representative Weber.
I believe we do it through town and county, Democratic organizations in order to make sure as many, that there's many representatives as possible throughout the whole state, but we do it recognizing that it is not part of the governmental structure.
So is it like a caucus system? Do you call it a caucus system?
All right.
We don't, we don't go to the high schools and vote. It's all.
Okay.
All right.
There is a list of, both on the town, county, and elected representatives level, a list of the people who are qualified. And then I believe that there are also, there are also local elections. So there are some people who are there by virtue of their position, and there are other people who are elected by the county caucuses.
All right, because the bill clearly says each state party convention, so I'll presume that nobody knows if or when both parties ever use this. But Representative Berry, do I understand then that you might be requesting OLS to do an amendment to HB 55?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'm happy to lead the charge on that.
And Representative Smith might do a dueling amendment if indeed he wants to wipe the whole thing out, and then we can have a little fruckus over that. All right. Okay. All right, maybe we should send, save that for the last vote. All right, so I think we've made a couple of decisions as a consensus, by consensus on this committee. We will be meeting on November 3rd and 4th to discuss maps. That will be published for comment at public input sessions in Rep Hall the week of November 8th. I need to check on the exact dates because I can't remember whether I have the 8th and the 9th or the 9th or the 10th. And we will commence our executive session on the bills before this committee on November 16th to conclude by hook or by crook by on Wednesday, the 17th, so that these will be reported out by the 18th. Maps to be considered by the committee will be submitted to staff at least 24 hours ahead of the meetings on November 3rd. Remember the, on November 3rd. And I will speak with staff about how we organize that for purposes of getting it together because I suspect we might need somebody on staff to respond to your issues when you try to submit something and it doesn't work. I'm just anticipating technology issues.
Madam Chair, the simplest thing would be to get at least one member of staff equipped with these programs and make sure they know how to print appropriately.
Okay.
Because the files, the program files are fairly small and easy to email in. It's making them readable by people without the program that's the challenge.
All right. So that will be to staff so that it can get to us 24 hours before the meeting, and I will not be haggling over an hour or so. So if you're getting maps at 11:00 instead of 10:00, we're going to have to deal with it. Staff is doing the best they can to help accommodate us. As to the bills themselves, I'm expecting an amendment from Representative Berry as to HB 55. I am not expecting to be receiving maps on HB 51 or 53 because I'm expecting that the Senate will be dealing with those primarily and hope that they confirm that when they have their organization meeting so that it decreases the work for this committee, though we will be reviewing it as it crosses over out of the Senate to us. And as to maps being submitted for consideration by the committee, we will be dealing with HB 50, state rep, HB 52, congressional districts, and HB 54, county commissioner. And I will ask one more time, is the HB link up, Representative Piedra? Because otherwise, I have multiple stops after this meeting. Thank you, I regret, but thank you for that update. All right, does anybody else have any business for this meeting before we close it? If you don't, Representative Wilhun.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was really pleased to hear that there would be two opportunities for the public to weigh in on the maps. I'm hoping that as you do your scheduling, you will consider having one of those held off-site and not in Concord, and one of them in the evening so that folks who may be working during the day or might be further away, I think the county hearings that we had, or sorry, public listening sessions, were helpful to get lots of input from lots of different types of people who may not be able to travel to Concord during the daytime to weigh in. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. I will also again remind the public who might be listening that we have a website for you to submit testimony to, and the goal is to have what we will be presenting on that website before the hearing to provide access. And I'll have to sort of see what requests are going on because as far as I know, that sort of rings true for any bill that the House considers, and I think at a certain point, we have to realize there are limits to what we do. I also have concerns, quite frankly, about holding night meetings and the safety aspect of that for people coming in and out. It was a consideration, I can tell you, when we scheduled public input sessions as to the location, as to the availability of parking and access. And I think those are exasperated at night here in Concord or any place. But we'll, I'll take a look at it. All right. I'm not seeing any other hands. I want to thank you all for joining us. Enjoy a nice week off, have lots of fun with the program, and see you with lots of paper, I think, in November.